I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm gonna start with the attendance here. Will you take the roll please Lori?
Councilmember Ringo?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Mayor Thielan?
Present.
Councilmember Brian?
Here.
All right. So I would like to, first of all, welcome you to, this is our regular city council meeting for July 2020. This is Tuesday, July 14th. Agendas that we'll be going through are in the back. There will be an opportunity to speak early on, typically when we get to the items, so I'm guessing you're all here for the road improvement discussion, your opportunity to speak will be at the beginning of the meeting. You please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to speak at that point if you have something to say. Otherwise, typically during the council meeting, we won't take additional questions on the road process at that time. So that would be the time to speak. As part of the agenda, we have the agenda in front of us. I would like to add two things to tonight's agenda. I want to talk about the CenterPoint Energy is doing utility work in the area, and we've had, their contractor gave us some misinformation, which we appropriately, because we got it from the contractor, put it on the website, but then CenterPoint wanted that changed. So I'd like to have that discussion added to the item four, the council items. And then I wanted to talk about council being notified on public notices when they're sent out and who they're sent to, so we get to see the letters are going out. I think part of what happened with CenterPoint was they sent out a letter, their staff is doing something different, and the people answering the switchboards didn't know what both of them were doing. So I just wanted to touch base with us on that here. So those two items, council approval on, council being copied on public notices, and then the CenterPoint Energy. Otherwise, the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo.
I would like to move under consent agenda item G, so that would be council item number C, recycling center. And then remove planning and zoning. Engineering is then number two, emergency management is number three, and council item will be number four.
All right, anything else for adjustments on the agenda? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we have a consent agenda, we have the minutes, the treasures report, sheriff's contract, the CenterPoint grant, premise change at Northwoods, operational change in office hours, and Lakeside's cabinet. The only thing on Lakeside's, do we have a, Bob sent out, looks like a permit? Do we have to sign that, or he signed that, or how? What do we have to do with that?
Well, it needs your approval. If you're going to approve the golf cart usage, then council will need to approve that.
All right. So since that is on the consent agenda, did everybody see the permit that came out from the attorney?
Does it address the issue of indemnifying us?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay.
Basically, if, so let's-
Yeah, I did see that.
So before we do the consent agenda, we'll just talk briefly about that one. If that's the only one that has a question on here, other than recycling, I moved off. Lori, you must have contacted Bob last week, and he sent out a memo on Friday that said, by ordinance, we couldn't allow it, or it wasn't allowed, I guess, but the council could allow it. And it looks like on Monday, then he sent a permit, and so he sent a permit along. So our ordinance doesn't allow ATVs and golf carts and things on roads. But being that this is a one-day event, it looks like Bob's recommendation then is to have a permit which covers what could be done when, where, and that we're indemnified, and I don't know if there's anything else on that that anybody remembers. You've got it there, Mary?
I do, yeah. No, that's, and I read that, I heard you.
So bait?
Indemnifying insurance and releasing the city from any claims.
And one of the questions that had come up was the citywide event, whether we needed to enforce our pandemic policy. This is a private event, so the city's claim on that is it's a private event, they're responsible for their own pandemic plan, and they're responsible to the state, not to us on that. So we're not going to take issue with that as long as they abide by their pandemic plan with the state, it's not the city's to enforce. So we're not gonna, that has nothing to do with what we're doing. And as long as we're indemnified, if something happens on the roads, we should be covered. I think the other thing that's said in there, the insurance has to be valid.
Limit's not less than the maximum liability limit for maintenance to pay.
Yeah, but it was a date, because we had a question, because Lakeside's insurance renews in September. And I think it just has to be 10 days before the event, or a week before the event, or something. So our questions from the workshop are answered, and the investigation's taken care of. So part of this RCA for Lakeside would be that permit. So considering the consent agenda, that would include that permit, and we would process it for you. Is that understood?
Yes.
Okay. With that said, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo.
I approve this consent agenda as amended.
I second it.
And the motion is second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to road improvement discussions. Did the council get a chance to look over what was sent out? Last week after our meeting, Lori sent out information that there is room in the budget to take back the cost for the culverts.
Yes.
Incorporate that in. And Dan and I had a discussion, and we talked to Shane. Shane sent out information, we forwarded to Lori, that if there was any other items that could be tightened up within the proposal, and he came up with a little over $11,000. So based on that discussion, those numbers changed. That now expected cost for that project is 61...
Eighty.
Eighty. You know, give or take. Other things that happen with the road could come in lower, could come in slightly higher, but approximately 6180. Were there other questions regarding what's happened since the workshop? If the council would take back the payment for the culverts, and work with Shane and the winning bid to tighten up the loam and seeding part of it? The other part of that discussion was, because we talked last week, when Lori brought the information from Ellers, it said the interest rate would be slightly under two at this point, and the attorney's saying we need to be adding the state statute approximately 2%. It would be presenting a proposal on both projects at 4% rather than the 6% we projected. Is council clear on that?
Yes.
All right. Other questions here? You know what, I take back, because I didn't see it on the agenda. We didn't actually give you the opportunity to speak. So we'll put that in there now if you have something you wanted to say on this. I don't know if you were following what we just said, but we went back after our meeting last week and looked where we could tighten things up. One of the challenges we have is our road projects are all tied together. In order to get the numbers we get on a summer project, we bid the neighborhoods individually, so that we can, rather than group all prices together, we put a neighborhood together, but we put all neighborhoods together in the bid. So we sent out to contractors, they're bidding on the whole project, and if part of it goes down, the whole project goes down for the summer. Now, understanding that the cost was higher than we had projected, we went back and looked at where we could trim cost within the budget, within the projected budget. And we pulled out just over $41,000 out of the project that the city will be responsible for. And we worked with our accounting firm to look at lowering the interest rate. So last week, we had almost $7,000 per parcel. We've trimmed that down to 6180, $6180, and we reduced the interest rate from six to 4% on that for those that are paying over 10 years. So that's the proposal that's before the council right now. If you guys want to speak on that, this would be an opportunity to do so.
Well, we'd just be foolish to stop it, since it's all wrapped up in one, or move it, or make any change of the sorts. Can we make it, so you got 4% interest, when does that, when does that be paid in full without getting slammed on all that?
If you wanted to pay in full before any interest was involved, that would be November, end of October. We typically, we put the final actual numbers out when we see what the construction comes in at. We know what they can't go over, but if the project comes in better, there's a reduction even more. So we know what the cap end is going to be, we just don't know what the lower end. If anything goes over the estimated count the city picks up, anything that goes under that, we reduce the residence portion of it appropriately. And so we don't get those numbers out until the project's done. And so the, paying the full amount upfront to avoid interest is, do you know the exact date in November, Lori?
I think it's November 15.
Yeah, it will come out in a letter, but typically it's about November 15. If it was, if it was to be put on the taxes and charge interest at 4%, that would be over a 10-year period. So it'd be six, 10-plus interest.
Then always add it to the land tax anyways, every year?
Yeah.
So 6,000 over 10 years?
Yeah.
And they're liable if they roll for 10 years then? For what, 10 years of it? Just 10 years?
No, well, you know, again, in this case, because we're reclaiming the surface here, we're expecting that that's going to make a 20-year roll. There will be maintenance, not charged to the residents, but we'll be doing maintenance over that time. But we anticipate that to be a 20- to 30-year road when it starts.
If you're gonna pay them over, what's on your mind?
They're going to grind up what's there, put down a new base with it. They'll take the base that's there, and the batuminus that's there, they'll grind them together and put a new base. That's why the road will be approximately three, four inches higher. And so they'll put down a new base, and then they'll put down three and a half inches of batuminus on top of that new base.
What are they gonna do with protecting that into the existing driveways then?
That's all part of it. So the driveways that are there, there is a certain amount, depending on the driveway. If it's gravel, they put a small apron off the blacktop to the gravel. If it's a blacktop driveway, they go in an appropriate amount on the right of way, depending on how the driveway's laid out right now.
What's the river at 10 feet?
Right of way there is gonna be 12 feet, 15?
We always go 15 to plant trees or whatever, you know, after the edge of the road.
So what they do is, typically, they look at each driveway, and they work with the individual driveway to see where the driveway appropriately could cut into to make the smoothest transition.
I got concrete to help to the end there.
They'll put concrete in.
Yeah.
Yeah, they replace what's there. If it's gravel, it's gravel, with a small apron. If it's blacktop, it's a transitional blacktop. If it's concrete, it's concrete. So they'll break it off at an appropriate point. They'll either saw cut it or break it off in expansion joint, and then replace it with concrete.
Now, what happens with interest if we pay it off next November entirely?
We talked about that last year with the county, and the county is, it's either all or not, because the county doesn't know how to keep track of, this year, somebody paid a portion of it, and this year, they took the interest this year, not the interest next year.
Well, doesn't the county do taxes year by year as well as anyone else, be able to figure that out though?
Excuse me, Mary, and council, you can pay it off as long as, November 15th in every year is your deadline. So if you decide you don't, and you can't, or you don't want to pay it off this year, in 2020, by November 15th, you would only pay the interest for one year, but you could pay it off anytime after that, and you would pay, you'd have to pay for whatever year you didn't pay it off in advance. So the year, 2020 is cut off this year in November, and if you wait until March, April, May, June of next year, whenever next year, you've only paid for 2020 interest, you would not, or 2021 interest, you would not be paying for the rest.
It'd still be 4%, but you say 4% over 10 years is different than 4% in one year if you pay it off.
Right.
I didn't, I didn't understand.
Because if you amount of money you lose, it's better not paying it over 10 years than using the money for yourself that, you know what I mean? It just seems like an astronomical chunk, take out to pay in one year, than maybe just do it over 10.
And that's typically why, you know, most people take that option. You know, most people take the option to pay it over 10 years. Some people prefer to have it just over and done with. So in previous projects, we've had a portion to pay it all off, but I would say the majority go with the 10-year.
Well, 6100 right now, we're crunching to some emergency funds if winter goes bad, yeah?
Yeah.
Or not? It's 4%, 6100 then?
Yeah, right now, our projection is 6180.
6180?
Yeah.
Or not?
It's not like they don't work there. Oh, one more thing. I hope that not been taken care of from the roads.
The drill, the core samples?
Yeah.
Lori?
Some of them are washed out or in so bad that we just taking the alcohol with it. So the core started here, and then it clacked in, and it must have ended quite early in the year, it would be freezing, because it deteriorated and lifted, and it just-
Yeah, it was done in winter time.
And then jacked up big sections, and then all just turned to crumble. Roads perfect until the crumbles where the cores are. Did a lot of damage to it.
That whole surface at this point's going to be all taken up and grounded back into base.
When they do, when that work exactly?
Well, if the council approves tonight, we would authorize the bid, and we expect that it would start later August. Depends on the contractors. Last year, they told us later in the year, and they had an opening, and took it earlier, so. Whenever the contractor's available, it has to be done by September.
By September, then, you'd be at foot, and it's all gonna be done?
No, it has to be done.
September, what date is it?
End of September. But last year, we thought it was going to be late July, and they came in June and said, our schedule permits us now, and they came and did it. All three projects, rather quickly. It all depends on what the contractor's schedule is. Once we get it, it typically takes about 10 days, I think they said, to process the paperwork. So they'll have their authorization by the end of this month, and anytime after that, and they will alert us when they're going to do it. So that'll be.
Will you guys set out a file for that, that they're gonna be shredding up the road then, for date?
What did we do last year, Lori?
What we did last year is we required everybody's email address, and we would send out updates by email. So we would send an initial letter out stating that we'd like to provide your email address, so we can keep in contact with you on the progress of the road. So we're not constantly sending out letters every week.
You guys do a paper on editing that?
It's, you get the information faster.
Well, I'm required because I don't spend a lot of time on emails themselves and all that. Then, I don't, you guys always send out letters in the past, I don't know if it changed, it wasn't highlighted on paper, on the paper, you know, you guys send out for the new festival, things like that, like the changes or, you know, the letters, section that we read for any changes in the year, you know, things like that. People do read, but we don't know if I'm in the carousel, and I know where's the look outside. I don't know if here I still look to you. Still wonder where it is.
The, which information?
Four emails.
Oh. Well, we would get your email, and then-
Yeah, but I wouldn't know unless I can get Ray Bell to, you know.
Oh, well, what I'm saying is, we would send out the letters to all of the residents, just so you thought of the road improvement project, and we would tell you that if you would like to be informed by email of all the progress.
I thought you said you've already sent it out.
No, not yet.
Oh.
That's what we've done in the past. We did that last year, so that, I think that's probably how we'll handle it again this year. Then we can give you up-to-date information on what's happening on your road, rather than sending a letter out on Monday, and you did it on Thursday, and the work that we were telling you about is already done.
Or the fact of having to go to the website to look at, not that you have changes, and the weekend, you don't know if there are changes, maybe missed it. Or if you have anything there, it would be a-
You will have it on the website as well, won't you? But yeah, those letters haven't gone out yet, because the council hasn't authorized the project yet. So until we authorize the project, then the information will go out. And if people choose to be contacted by email, do you do text?
Yeah.
And otherwise, if they do prefer hard copy letters, then we'll do that as timely as we can. Yes, sir?
Okay, I was wondering, now, seeing there's only three of us here, how are we gonna be notified? Now, we're gonna be voting to accept the project or not accept the project, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what, are they gonna be online then, for the rest of the people that are concerned about this, or what? How's this gonna be working?
Well, the meeting's recorded on YouTube, so this meeting is recorded. We'll have minutes that will go, from the meeting, that will go on our website, so that'll be available online. And then if the council decides to proceed with this, then the residents will be notified by letter that the project is proceeding, and then they'll be asked how they want to be communicated with, with us.
Okay, now, we're, just three of us are gonna be voting here? We're-
You guys won't be voting, we'll be voting. At this point, it's all-
I thought we were gonna be voting.
No, only the council will vote.
So yeah, you guys, everyone here has got the say-so, whether it's gonna be done or not.
Yes.
Well, what am I doing here then? I mean, if it doesn't matter, there's no sense to me being here. I thought that's what we were gonna be voting, the people that'd be showing up to this meeting were gonna be deciding one way or the other.
No, you are expressing your opinion one way or the other, and then the council takes that into consideration, and then votes accordingly. So at this point-
Well, okay, well, I'll say my five cents worth here, but I don't see no reason. I live on 190th Lane, Gerald Nash, 68, 17, 190th. Now, I don't see no reason why, like has been said before, those lanes, and I both, on 189th and 190th, I lived here for 23 years, and I don't see no problem with the way they are right now.
Forty-three years.
Forty-three years.
Forty-three, pardon me, forty-three years, yeah. So I don't see no problem with it is right now. And I mean, if it's, like you said, if it's, I don't know, I just don't see any reason. I already went through one back in 93 or whenever, when it went from gravel to the original blacktop. So I'm gonna be spending, two times now, I'll be financing this thing. So.
Yeah.
Like I said, I don't see any reason why we gotta be doing this again. The only, like, on the end of 190th, I think it was about 200 feet, where it kind of, where it touches the next side street, I can't think of the name.
Colmite.
Colmite. That's about the only bad part, where it really touched, you get really that bad. Like I said, as far as I can see, that side street can be sitting there, because, I mean, most people I know are not really using it anyway, and so a bunch of 18-year-old kids are hot rodding back and forth, so.
Yeah, and, you know, with the original road going back in the early 90s, we expect the roads to be 20- to 30-year roads, so we're 27 years right now.
Yeah, I've heard that. Yeah, I've heard that, I've heard that.
And while the, the end of the road closest to Jasper, the end of 189th, 190th, certainly aren't as bad as the rest of the road. You know, we are in a program where we're addressing all the cities, all the streets throughout the city, and so we're trying to get them before they get worse and get more expensive. At this point, it's better than rebuilding the entire road, to be able to just reclaim the surface and then overlay that new base is less expensive than the options if we waited a couple of years. So we're trying to stay proactive in a more affordable way, when obviously, you know, it's got an immediate impact on those that are living on it right now. But it would be more expensive in a couple of years if we waited, and we found that on some of the other roads we've done.
Well, the government's central business is coming in now. It's cost a fortune, we got to put in that work on the Mason, so I understand what a little time to the work is all it says, maybe. 4% of 6100 is, you know, if it's 30 years ago, it'd be fine.
Because I know, I know, your first meeting you had here, I know this one lady, she was up here, and she was saying, I like, she lost her husband, she's a widower, you know, it's kind of hard times for her. I don't know, I don't know who she is. I think she's on, lives on 189th, but it's kind of hard, she says, for doing this all by herself. So I mean, maybe I could take that into consideration, too. And a lot of other people are the same way around. I've heard that, you know. Right now, it's a bad time for them to be coming up with $6100, so. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
I got one more thing to address, is, did you make out to make businesses that open the public a separate entity outside of the residents if they share the same lot? So they should pay. The business has outside coming in, it's a separate entity besides the resident?
Yeah, so we investigated that, and-
Why would they, why would they have to pay, you know, instead of 12, they make it 13?
Yeah, the, the IUP that exists for the businesses at the end of the road, we looked into that, we pulled the IUP out, and they are complying with the conditions of that IUP. And the way it's structured right now is because it's an interim use permit, is what an IUP is, and that is for business activity in a residential neighborhood, but it's not reclassified as a separate commercial lot. So there isn't, there isn't provision right now to take those that have somewhat more activity because of their interim use permit.
Then they don't pay any land use for taxes or anything for that business? They got, you know, their own personal big parking lot, they got their indoor arena. I mean, they got 10, 12,000 square feet of commercial work back there. It's massive. No parking in probably half the neighborhood in that lot.
And as long as they abide by the conditions that the council had put on, put in place when they first applied, they can continue to do that. When they operate outside those conditions, then the council takes a look at the IUP and determines whether to be newer or not.
What is the condition for that?
That there's more traffic that comes down from there, which ruins the road.
She was on the edge of, when we came to the meeting, of what we kind of came to a really bad agreement, and the examples were horrifying.
Councilmember Ringo?
To make, on the reasoning of how much traffic she can have. And then she would totally disregard and have events that she would have 100, 200 cars, she'd have weddings to wear the whole neighborhood, and then she has to cater in people because the neighborhood's full. You know, events that, is that a residential issue, or is that a commercial issue? You know, she height, she can height swing in either way she wants. That's why this traffic is, things are just getting worse. Our children grew up to where they couldn't even play in the street because the traffic's too bad, and they can fly on, as soon as they get on their cell phone, diving uphill with the sun going down, and they can't see anything. She said she was gonna help the signs, but nothing was ever done of that. It's just too, now my kids are older, and it's too reckless. Kids are growing up now.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo?
If I remember correctly, we asked our mayor to, if we're hearing another, like, we cannot charge- We cannot, uh, charge a residential property in a, in an assessment any different whether they have this commercial use on it or not. So we can't charge them more for that work. That's what I got from the attorney. I remember also in another meeting, um, that our assessor, when they're coming out to assess properties, every property gets assessed like every five years, that they are looking at properties that have commercial usage on them. And those properties, then he can change the, um, property tax. Not valuation, but the property tax classification to commercial, so they would pay more property taxes. But that does not have anything to do with the road assessment. When they, we staff looked at the, the current IUP, from what we understand, it's being adhered to. So that was one agreed. If the neighborhood is aware of things, we need to know that right then. Because we can't go back six months now.
We couldn't get out of our grannies. And they locked in and where, where we backed out, there was no room, there was no one there.
Yeah, we need to know that yet. We can't do anything about it after. We need to know that time. Whether it's email to the city or voicemail to the city, um, offices, um, the office is Saturday, it's difficult. But then we can react to that right then. But we can't do it within six months after we need to know that. So if next weekend she has an event, um, that is not allowed by her interim use permit, we need to know that.
How much traffic is she going to have?
Physically tell the cars ourselves to bring to you.
She is allowed the traffic that is associated with her business. That, that is.
So there's no limit of how many vehicles can come and go?
Yeah.
So you're going to say that her traffic is not tearing our roads down is often speaking.
There was a limit set with just because of the traffic for.
So let's, let's rein this back in.
It's like riding a high.
So after our meeting the other night, we asked our planner to pull the interim use permit that was issued back in 2013. So seven years ago, there was a permit issue. And there are, are conditions here. Um, 10 conditions. And if, and this is public information, so you're allowed to have a copy.
I, I was here to make the, half the conditions.
All right, so condition number nine. If additional events are desired in the future, which vary from horse training, boarding lessons, camps and rescue operations discussed herein. Or if the type, intensity or duration of activities, um, changes to negatively impact surrounding area properties, an application for an amended IUP will be required. I don't see weddings on here. I don't, if, if you're saying the activity is different that's within these conditions. If the intensity, the number of gatherings, the amount, the size of gatherings, then that's appropriate to bring back to the council to review the, the IUP and it either has to be amended or adjusted. If they can't comply with it, then that would be addressed with at that time. So again, because we don't live on the street, we're not aware of, of those types of things. And that has to be communicated to the office.
Well, they, they have serviceable traffic that goes to 2:00 every morning.
Again, we, we have, we have a 10 o'clock, I believe it's on here, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, I mean, but there's three, there's groups that come and go for, there's a 8 o'clock, there's a 1, 2 o'clock. And then there's a late afternoon that comes and then there's, uh, trucks, trailers and stuff to remove horse manure, maintenance of things. You know, you, I mean, the model works, she did over the winters, you must have gave her permits for that, for the trucks that came down the road as well.
As far as, um, construction or as far as what?
Yeah, the construction, actually, once you add it on to her indoor arena or fencing, the whole, uh, the asphalt lot. They, they brought in equipment that shouldn't even be, you need a permit to even drive on that road and do residential with it. It's just too big, too dangerous. It's not something that, that, you know, I don't know, a lot of people sneak stuff in. Right, it's, you know, the roads do take a huge amount of damage. We wrecked a lot of roads, but we paid for them. And we're ready with trucks, but we had paid permits at $2,000 a truck.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
If I can ask, so are you saying that right now on a daily basis, there is traffic associated with her business after, was it 10:00 PM? Are you saying the battery of day?
After 10:00 PM and there's, uh, you know, um, I do a lot of computer stuff at night, you know, and I sit outside and enjoy the weather. At midnight, you have to miscue his leave and a lot of times I can hear them running a skid steer lower.
All right, and what, then, then you need to.
Cleaning barns, cleaning barns and whatnots. It's kind of home that's just.
We're not opposed to the business, it's the traffic that comes and goes.
But if they're not adhering to your, to the IUP that their business traffic is to cease at 10:00, then you need to let the office know. So that there's.
He said, oh, 8:00, 8:00, is it 8:00, 10:00?
So if it's after 10:00 PM and it's business related, not maintenance of their property, you know, you can run a skid steer at 10:32 if you want.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, so, so, but if it's business related and if it's traffic related to the business, then let us know that. Again, as mayor, so we don't live on that street, so we don't see that.
What would we call, you know, tra, how would we know what's truly related to the business, you know?
Well, I mean, she owns horses, so she's got work all hours of the day and night, you know.
We just, we just know it goes. I got a camera that sees the entire road, you know, for, uh, for a driveway and.
Make that complaint to the office and then our planner will have to follow the conversation and.
Again, you know, I, I think this is one of the things that, when we looked at, through this, it's one of the things we've, we've used this as an object lesson for our planning and zoning. And, and for the council as, as we're new with this. If we're not specific enough in our conditions, then things happen. You know, it says here hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. What does that mean? Well, to me, that means one thing. To you, that might mean something else. So to Mary says, well, yeah, they run business all day long, so they're going to clean up the horses after, so they run the skid steer till midnight. In, in my residential neighborhood, I would say that's hours of operation. Get your work done before 10:00 PM. Because after that, neighbors want to be sleeping or want to be sitting out enjoying the peace and quiet. So.
Neighborhood doesn't mind 10:00 PM or, you know.
No, but if it's 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, it's.
Yeah, it's, the harmony machines cut through the air.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
They did talk to her about the, uh, dog show or something and that is not going to continue anymore. She's agreed to not do that, to raise money for the dog because you guys had said that, that, that drew huge amounts of people.
We did see you guys come out and disperse them, which was very healthy.
She said, um, she'll cancel that. She won't be doing that anymore. So that was one thing that she, you know, you won't have in your, so they did go and talk to her and she really wants to, to be a good neighbor and do and listen to you.
And she really is.
And wants to do it. She doesn't want to upset you, so she wants to change what she can. And she said that dog show thing she can stop.
She just happens to be the example of, I kind of want the future things to be where if someone's going to have a home business, they should be two entities. Because if you're going to make a business at home, it's not only a residence, but it's a place of work. If you can allow all side environment, then you should be responsible. Or the business should be responsible for where it lays, just as well as we have to be for our homes, for our road. You know, if you could take that and move a business into an area, no matter where she put her business, she'd be paying for the roads and upkeep of anything. But now you can hide it in the house and then you can escape from it under this. I don't know if it's a ticket to.
There has been discussion.
You know, I don't know what it is, why we even have it.
So it certainly has been some discussion on how we can alleviate some of the traffic on the road. We don't have anything solid on that yet, but, but we are in discussion. What else she might be able to do, so.
Um, can we lower the speed limit on, on that end there when they come out of there at 20 miles an hour perhaps?
Take a look. I know we can go to 35 up to.
What's 30 now?
Well, right now, they consider it 55.
The, the hill runs, you know, when they run it out there, if you ever drive up that hill and the sun's anywhere in that direction, you really can't see anything. And the first thing that we watch and see is they get on, they're looking straight down their cell phones and texting right up that hill plus the sun. If, we literally stand on the end of the road and just.
Be counted by evening traffic?
The afternoons, yes. Anytime the sun is below the horizon, then you're going up that hill, that's all you see. They, you know, the public is paying no attention. We stood down by the road, we're walking a dog, we just hold him back and he, they burned. Just a foot away from you. They have not even looked up. They didn't even know they drove by you.
The tenants are about to pay off the service.
Well, that's why my children wouldn't allow to be on the roads anymore.
All right, we will take a look at that too.
Thanks.
Thank you for, you know, it's less on the road, but it's important on impact on the roads.
Right.
We appreciate the input.
Kind of ties to the whole having business in the neighborhood.
Understand, if we're, if we're going to get this road to, to last the better part of 30 years, it's, it's how we maintain it is important, so.
Why didn't they make a dole mine? You guys don't know how they still have to make it. Isn't that.
Dolomite was torn up because we were having heaves in it and we were trying to fix the, the base to see what we could do before we blacktop. And rather than blacktop last year and then grind it up again this year, we left it to see if it would settle so that we could take care of it all in one. The fewer joints you have in any given road, obviously, the better. So rather than do something there last year and then try and tie this into it and not have a good match, we let it settle for the year, knowing we're planning on doing this this year, so. So that was intentional.
You need a culvert there. A lot of the swamp, you know, with, with dolomite too.
This project has three culverts in it?
Yeah.
Did they put one on 2800 in the dolomite?
I would have to go back to the plan.
That, that, all that's up to our yard, that, 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 that's all up beyond, uh, from over. And the swamp is capable of flooding over the line in our woods.
Yeah, the road will be slightly higher than it is now.
That's what was scary years ago before. Here with children, we couldn't even drive on that road and we'd sink.
Just means that it's a, it's a, it's capable of flooding that road a couple of feet and falls home.
All right. Anything else on here?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Um, I know this, this, these two road projects have been, have been, um, reviewed by our, our staff and have been on the, um, on the radar to be improved, repaired, upgraded, um, for a good, probably five years now. So, um, when our staff reviewed the road projects and came up with five potential pro, projects in the end of 2018, uh, this, these two were, were included in there. So, uh, knowing that our staff evaluated all of the city roads and came up with, uh, these two projects that should be improved, I would recommend moving forward with it.
Second.
That's a motion now, the comment.
Hmm? Is that a motion or?
Recommendation. Or a motion.
I would move, um, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
I would move that, uh, the council approved Resolution 2020 dash 44, accepting the bid and awarding contracts for 190, 189th Lane, 190th Lane and Dolomite Street Road Improvement Project.
Second.
All right, with the understanding that the, uh, the engineer's letter.
Yes.
And, uh, council's contribution. As part of that. All right, I have a, a motion. Have a second. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd make a motion, Resolution 2020 dash 45, accepting the bid and awarding the contract for the Krypton Street, 183rd Avenue, Pistaseam Street and Merle's Lone Road Improvement Project.
My second bit.
Motion and second. Any other discussion or comments? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor, you're going to turn on your speaker, your microphone? All right. Next item. CARES Act. Do you have a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'd make, like to make a motion to approve Mayor Pealan and myself to work with, uh, our city clerk Lori to, on a plan for the CARES Act funds. Also to, uh, approve reimbursement of the office front desk remodeling, the two recycling days expenses, uh, the election preparedness for this year's expenses, as well as our emergency preparedness, planning, consultant fees from our CARES Act dollars.
Would second that?
Motion and second. Discussion.
So what exactly, uh, is happening right now? Are we approving those recommendations or is there's going to be discussion?
There, there will be, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilmember Brian.
Mr. Mayor, um, Councilmember Greenberg, we're, we're accepting the funds from the state.
Okay.
Um, this motion is approving Mayor Pealan and I to continue to work with Lori and staff to, to come up with what else we can spend our funds on. And with, with the, I don't know if the checks come in yet. No. Um, taking a portion of that now and paying for these few items. So there still will be more to come. Um, this plan is, you know, uh, can, can still be re, still needs to be reworked and discussed further by the council as to what we exactly want to spend on.
Okay.
As well as kind of diving into some of these to say exactly what, to, to get further information on what that exact, that exactly means.
Okay.
And then based on that, we can, um, we'll have to come back to council to go, for, especially for the bigger ticket items, go, this is what we'd like, this is what we'd recommend spending the money on.
So part of that would be, um, evaluating other options other than what you see in the list. If there's something that could be used for internet, um, if there's something, uh, there was another call with the, the county today on, on state, county and city funds that could be used for business expenses. What can they be used for and what can't they be used for and then how do we not double up between those agencies to give all the money to one party and not enough to anybody else? So we're going to be looking at other places besides what's here, that the money might be spent, presented to the council to say, what does the council prefer? Here's the list, what do you want to do? The other part of it is working with, with, uh, staff to identify these, anything else we would recommend to make sure that we believe they fit the letter of the law on what can be spent, so the county or the state doesn't come back later and ask for money back. So we want to make sure, what Councilmember Brian suggested here is, we've looked at the recycling funds because we, we did that because of COVID. We had to do it the way we did. Um, the modifications on city offices, those are specifically COVID-related. Um, the emergency operations plan we put into place and the consultant we've been using for COVID. You know, those expenses, these are the types of things we know already fit the act and we've expended the funds so that we're just asking at this point, when the check comes in, that Lori would take the appropriate money from those activities and put it back into our general fund. And no other expenditures until the council approves. So we're not asking for approval to do this, we're asking to be able to work with, with Lori and making recommendations to the council.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raino.
Would you be willing to amend your motion? Um, I know that Linda Colas, the Farmers Market Coordinator, had, has had some expenses related to COVID, basically the hand sanitizer and some other products that are needed. Um, I'd like to be able to have Linda provide that information to you and that be approved for expenses, not within the Farmers Market budget, but within this COVID care funds. If you'd be willing to amend your motion.
I'm not following it, so I might not.
She's just saying that, that consider the COVID expenses for the Farmers Market as one to be acceptable. Lori can re. Lori can reimburse now. So, uh, did she get masked, too?
We did.
We got masks in the city, yeah. But, and if there are future, I mean, she did buy, um, she had to buy spray bottles, um, for the hand sanitizer, she had to buy, um, I think it was a five gallon bucket of sanitizer, um, to go into the spray bottle. So there were some expenses that she incurred based on the requirements due to COVID. So I'd like those expenses reimbursed through the CARES Act and not come out of farmer's market funds.
Well, I would, it would be my understanding that those expenses would originally become, would, would be coming out of the farmer's market funds to begin with.
Well, she, okay.
And reimbursed through the CARES Act.
And then reimbursed through the CARES Act.
Yeah, I, uh, she's not putting it in for reimbursement yet.
Okay.
But I just, when she does, can that get, I mean, can, that, to me, that's a legitimate CARES Act cost. So if we take it out of the farmer's market fund and then the CARES replenishes that, that's fine.
If you took a look at, at our previous invoices, we, we paid certain materials and labor on the office. We paid that.
Yeah.
Lori will just go back and say, okay, that money will be replaced out of it. What we have to do for this is we have to document, we have to keep a spreadsheet of what we spend.
Right, and, and I'm asking no different than what you're doing for the work in the office, for the elections, for the recycle center, just that those items purchased specifically due to COVID from the farmer's market would be COVID-related expenses, which then can be reimbursed to the city, um, through the, the CARES Act.
And I would agree that they can potentially be reimbursed, however, the city has not paid for them yet.
I, I understand that, she has not yet submitted an invoice and I need to tell her she needs to do that.
And, and my understanding, again, going over the county call this afternoon, what we have to do is we have to keep track. We have to have a spreadsheet that says, here's what we spent, here's why we think it's legitimate. And so the council will get a chance to see that list as well. Saying if, if we've missed anything, that this should be on that, too. You know, because we have a defined amount of money, we want to make sure that we capture it all before we finish with that money.
Right.
So that will be one that will be.
Yeah, and anything, you know, she knows now that what those bottles cost. She should hopefully not have to purchase any more bottles, but I think they were from the dollar store, so, you know, twenty of them, so that's twenty dollars. The hat, the sanitizer, I don't know what that cost her, um, but she should be able to tell us how many five gallon buckets she would need throughout the, the fest, or the, the market, so we'd have an idea, a general idea of what the total.
She getting that from the county?
Hmm?
She getting that from the county?
I think it was from the dollar store.
The sanitizer, I thought she got.
The sanitizer, I don't know, I, I.
I thought she got that from the counties.
Okay, I need to talk to her, but, but any relate, anything.
Where do people get their extra tables? To have the double tables?
That would have been their own, the vendor's expenses. I, I just wanted, that, that if the farmer's market does have COVID-related expenses, that once they are submitted to the city, the city takes that out of the farmer's market budget, that that money, um, is, uh, approved for reimbursement through the CARES Act.
It is legitimate, they wouldn't be doing it.
Right, they wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't.
And that's, that's the big thing, if, if things are only done because of the, the virus, anything we've had to do specifically for that. We can't reimburse lost revenues, but any expenses we can reimburse.
And I would say those spends, funds are more than likely legitimate, but we haven't spent them yet as of right this minute, so I'm not amenable to amending my motion.
Okay, so at the point that she puts them in for reimbursement.
We certainly, I have no problem adding that to our, here's our list of potential things. I mean, if, if the city reimburses Linda, Linda's made whole and then we can figure out how to make the city whole.
That's fine. I just hadn't thought about the farmer's markets until now.
All right, any other discussion on the, uh, the CARES process?
So at a later point, uh, after, um, there's more, um, delving into what we think we should do uh, with this money, then we'll have an opportunity to, uh, present our opinions on those.
I would say if, if, if you are aware of something, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
If you, if there's some, if you go through the list and you go, I don't want, I don't know what this means, what, how does all this work out, well, what about X, Y, or Z? I would suggest sending those to Lori so she can send them out to the council.
Okay.
Hey, here's your, here's your thoughts on, on how you would like, how you think just you would spend the CARES Act. I went through the list that was proposed, I really don't know what that means, here's a question I have about it. I, why do we need to do X, this thing, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And, you know, again, if it's, if it's, um, if it's a burning issue. Otherwise, what we'll do is we'll go through it and try and prioritize for the council. What we want to do is we try, want to get, we'll, we'll dance around that open meeting law where we're offering an opinion on something that's gonna be for the council and now it gets to too many people, then we get into the open meeting issues, so. So if you see something that, I have a question on this, then raise, raise that in a general fashion with Lori and then we can focus on that when we'll, we'll be updating the council at meetings, so.
Mr. Mayor.
The opportunity we have, because we'll have other special meetings coming up, um, as long as we notice it properly, we can bring up some of that for discussion at special meetings, if it's on the agenda. We just can't bring it up to the end of a gen, a special meeting if it hasn't been noticed on the agenda.
Sure, well, I'll save all my ideas and thoughts for later.
That's beautiful.
Councilmember Blake.
So when you send this list out to us and there are three of us that don't, that aren't happy about, or think that, that confused by certain issues, those could be, will we vote on this to decide?
Anything we decide to spend money on is the majority of the council.
Okay, that's what I was.
So there will be a, a.
So we'll all make this decision, not just you two.
Absolutely.
We're just making the recommendation to council.
All right.
Just rather than have us all have to sit here and.
Unless you, unless you would like to participate in the discussion with, with, about how to spend this money, that's okay, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. PUC, so, um, those of you that may remember, CenterPoint Energy came to the, the city a year or two back and asked to use the city hall here for a public meeting, two public meetings, actually, to present a, a proposal to bring natural gas to a portion of our city. Eastern edge of Old Viking, um, up Cleary Road and up Gypsy Valley. So in the north, or the east central part of the city. So they've been working their way up from Ramsey and they're working in different parts. And they had a meeting, got a bunch of people excited and signed up, and then something happened at CenterPoint Energy and they pulled back from the project. Okay, so people were very disappointed, they had to buy propane again for another period of time. Last year, um, we, we've been pushing for quite a while. So last year I met with, contacted people at CenterPoint Energy in an attempt to get this going again. The, the short version of it is, we have to have a, uh, Public Utilities Commission hearing to vote on whether CenterPoint Energy can go forward with this. And it kind of got hung up there this winter. And, and because of COVID, because of, uh, virtual meetings, for a variety of reasons, the Public Utilities Commission has not moved forward on this. So I've been in contact every two, three weeks, working with people from CenterPoint Energy, trying to get this moving. Met, uh, uh, by phone with some of the residents recently, uh, maybe two months ago. And it was determined that through, uh, one of the Facebook sites, they were trying to encourage people to contact Utilities Commission. We worked with, together with residents and, uh, CenterPoint Energy and said, if we get word out that more people, more residents could contact the Public Utilities Commissioners and get this on their docket. Well, this week, we finally got on it. They haven't had meetings, they're going to have a meeting next Thursday. And so thanks to all of the residents that did call in, um, thanks to the, the work of, Ryan and Shelley on the part of CenterPoint Energy, um, we have been able to move these forward to a vote to the Public Utilities Commission. Now unfortunately, in this process, um, if it passes the Public Utilities Hearing next week, the, uh, CenterPoint Energy is ready to start digging and hooking up homes in August. In order to be able to move that fast, and they can't go until the Public Utility Commission says they can go, in order to move that fast, they've authorized locators to come up and they've hired a company, DIS, as a subcontractor. DIS locates sewers and septic lines. And what they're doing is all these affected properties, they're going out to inspect for sewer lines. Well, they didn't, to my knowledge, Lori, they never told you they were doing that. They didn't inform the city. They didn't inform the people at their front desk, who receive phone calls. So they started coming out and walking through people's yards and locating. And when people wanted to know what they were doing, they called CenterPoint Energy and were told, we don't know who they are, because the gal at the front desk, the person at the front desk didn't know. So residents called the sheriff, which adds to our radio calls. All right, so this company, DIS, decided we better tell the city that we're out here in an authorized fashion, we'll have badges on, here's what we're doing. Unfortunately, when they gave that information to the city, they said that CenterPoint Energy has been authorized and the project is going forward, which is not factual. The, the Public Utilities Commission has authorized a hearing, at which time they will tell CenterPoint Energy whether they can go ahead. Dangerous information, because if that upsets the Public Utilities Commissioners, that may kill the project. Okay? So that, that subcontractor had no business telling us that information, we put it on our website. Well, somehow CenterPoint Energy found was on our website, called Lori, we're unable to get a hold, called Lori, they called me, said, you need to get that off the website now, because that could kill this project. So we want to make sure, so I contacted, um, tried to call Lori, she was busy, talked to Ellen. Ellen immediately took it off. So I called CenterPoint back and said, it was your subcontractor that gave the misinformation out. So I went back and looked what was on Facebook and, and they clearly said, we have a commission vote that's come up. Finally, as, as residents, we've all pulled together and they're, they're gonna have a commission vote next week. So they were not, to my knowledge, giving out any misinformation. But what the, what the subcontractor gave to us was misinformation. So I've asked CenterPoint Energy to only, to authorize who's gonna give information to Lori and Ellen. We won't put anything on the website unless it's authorized by the right people. Um, I asked CenterPoint Energy to go back to a subcontractor and straighten out with them, because they're the ones who caused the confusion. And if people are going to be working on an area, they need to contact the office, because Lori's gonna get calls and if she doesn't know what's going on, if you're Ellen, then they're gonna do the same thing, call the sheriff, because if people are wandering around your yard. The other thing that the subcontractor did is they said they were working on all of Nalben. For those people that don't have gas, that's a problem. For those people that have gas and if somebody wanted to their yard, you know, we want to make sure that they're not authorizing that either. So it was a, it was a bit confusing. Um, to my knowledge, no damage done, but CenterPoint did jump on it rather quickly and said, please get it off the site, um, because we don't want to mess up with the hearing we have next week. The hearing information has been sent out to the residents. All those people in the zone, uh, the phase that they're working on right now, either received a letter or an email yesterday. They will get further letters once the commission has decided whether to proceed or not. And then all those homeowners in that area will have two more opportunities to sign up. They will have representatives from CenterPoint Energy, uh, available while the project's being installed, asking people if, you get this rate if you sign up now. So we'll have a significant portion of the city that will have natural gas, potentially by September, if the Public Utilities Commission approves to, to go forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Where is this meeting gonna be held?
Uh, the, the meeting is at the Public Utilities Commission and. It's online, actually, it's a virtual meeting. And the residents were given that information. Lori, have you been given that information?
It's at nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen next Thursday?
The specific web instructs, instructions have, might have been sent. The, the letters on Facebook was posted by a resident out on Facebook.
So, so again, this is gonna be, you, you're probably, people aren't probably gonna get to weigh in on it, because it's a virtual meeting. So if you aren't on the docket, you won't get to speak. It'll be a virtual meeting that you can listen to. Um, there is, and Lori, if, if they don't, I'll send you this, I would imagine that, did you ever get a chance to talk to Shelley today?
I talked to her back and she didn't answer.
Okay. So Ryan is the sales consultant for New Market Development, he's the one that sent the letter out. He's got the link to the Public Utilities Meeting next week.
And it'll be between the Utilities and, uh, CenterPoint.
It's gonna be the Utilities Commission deciding whether to proceed. There won't be residents weighing in at that point. Residents have.
So, so CenterPoint won't be there?
Uh, CenterPoint won't be there.
It's the Utilities Commission and CenterPoint deciding together.
No.
CenterPoint has made the request, Utilities Commission will approve or deny.
Utilities Commission will discuss the issue and I'm assuming if they have questions, CenterPoint will be able to make a presentation and answer questions.
Okay.
But yeah, it's a, if you, if you as a resident want to weigh in, you have to send in a letter and so it's kind of like the hearing that we had for the fire board, where you can watch it on YouTube, but you can't, a resident can watch it, but they won't be allowed in to speak.
Okay.
The letter that came out said if, if the request is granted by the Utilities Commission, we have construction crews ready to start work early August. We will communicate via mail, email, and phone to verify the applications we have received to the, to date before we install. So when they had their previous meeting here in the city hall, um, they had people apply. Those people will be contacted because they've got their emails. If there's additional people, that's, at that point, they'll be sending out a letter saying, this is your chance to sign up, in this area only, they'll have a map. They've also suggested they may ask for city hall again to have a public meeting. We would have to socially distance probably open this door and have an in and out. But we'll wait for them to request that.
Mr. Mayor.
Let me just finish, now the letter says, as many, as many of you know, DIS, a sewer contractor for CenterPoint Energy, has been out in your neighborhoods. You should have received a postcard to advise you of this. And apparently, those people that called the sheriff didn't, get a postcard, didn't recognize the postcard. Due to office of pipeline safety, we required to very, verify all sewer and septic lines on a property and then he gave a number to call. So that, you know, that should have been out there beforehand. This information should have been presented to the city. This information should have been clearly presented to the residents before people started walking around their property. So we had a long discussion over that, on that matter with CenterPoint today. Um, they have agreed they're gonna work with Lori and her staff to make sure we communicate better going forward. But like I say, right now, it's a limited part of the city and, uh, other people certainly are welcome to this, but the only people that are getting this letter with that link are people in this zone, in this construction zone. Any other questions? And did you have anything else?
How many people are, are in the zone, Mr. Mayor?
Between one hundred and two hundred. Trying to remember the exact number, it's been a while since I've gone through the, the map, but it's, uh, I guess it goes halfway down Old Viking, uh, up Cleary to twenty-four, uh, up, uh, Gypsy Valley. I think it's Verdy Valley. And I'm not sure about Maze Estates and Aeronomos. They also, once this is up and running, then they're going to have a meeting on Phase Two, which will be coming in a year or two. They're thinking that once Phase One is done, Phase Two will go much faster, because they've got the bugs worked out. So, not gonna make any promises, but they're, they're hoping that short order after Phase One is completed, they'll be able to go to Phase Two. But since it's been confusing enough, we'll just leave it at that, let's get to Phase One. So if, if you happen to be on Facebook, um, the project has not been approved, that is scheduled for next Thursday. Thank the people that did contact the Public Utilities Commission for their support. It was important to help get this on their docket. And, uh, and if they can just lay low, because the, the CenterPoint doesn't. And if they can just lay low, because the CenterPoint doesn't want any confusion before this goes to the commission to add confusion to the process. We're excited. It'd be nice to have the gas going in in August here. One of the things that we've been discussing with the people at CenterPoint is we really needed to get this on the docket before people had to pre-buy their propane for the year. And we've been fighting this for five months, getting it on the docket. And so this is success, because it's been a long process. We thought it was gonna be on the docket in winter, and it's now July, so... But at this point, we just don't want everybody to mind their Ps and Qs, and let's get it done. And we, you know, again, I have asked that CenterPoint communicate more clearly and timely with the office, so that Lori will know if she does get a call, and then we can also give the heads up to the Sheriff's Department. Like I said, this postcard should have gone out, so people knew who was walking through their yards.
And it seems like it did.
Did it?
At least there's been, was some comments on Facebook about, "I think I got a postcard," but it was probably one of those that, not knowing what it was.
Yeah, if you said DIS is gonna be walking around, you know, I don't know how it was. Again, that's, that's one of the things that, and this is why my next item on here is I think it's important for vested parties to get that. That postcard should have come to the city. I mean, nothing like that should be going on that Lori doesn't know about. And obviously, that should be communicated to the council, because if we're talking to somebody or you're looking on Facebook and somebody says, "What's this?" Well, you got that postcard. Remember the old green postcards you got, or whatever it was? But yes, if nobody knows what DIS is, and this project has gone silent for two years, it maybe wasn't clear. I haven't seen the postcard to know. It was not clear enough that some people called the sheriff. So in that, you know, I appreciate Ellen, you know, once I told her that they'd contacted me, she looked at it and said, "Yeah, that's what it says. I'll take it down." So she took it off right away, and Shelley was pleased, and she said she'll get it straightened out, so...
Would you or Lori be notified with the specific details or a link for the hearing to just to view it?
They have asked previously if they supplied me a letter that I would authorize it as mayor, that they would say would be helpful with the Public Utilities Commission. They are going back to the governmental agency right now to see where that stands. I have offered support of city staff and council. If any of us can do anything to help convince the Public Utilities Commission. As far as testifying for it, they will tell us if we can testify. Otherwise, we would tune in just like this. I've asked them to provide this letter to the residents, to Lori, and to the council.
Okay.
They would provide it to Lori, and Lori would provide it to the council.
Right. I was just asking if there was a link that we could watch it, because the link, obviously, is a, the link that, the letter was just scanned in, so the link that's out on Facebook to view it isn't a valid link. And it says later on in the letter, we're gonna send out, I'm guessing they're sending out another letter with the actual WebEx or dial-in information, because they're saying, "If you're not gonna testify, you're probably better off just calling in and listening." So I would just have it, I know I put it on the...
But you know what? They don't have the... Because I just got a copy of the letter, they sent me a copy of the letter here. It says, "See included instruction," but doesn't have a phone number either on this one.
Right, so I'd just like, if, I'd like to be, at least have the option on Thursday to listen to it.
So Lori, when, I would imagine Shelley will try you again tomorrow. Would you ask for a live link for the council? So that we can actually link into the WebEx?
There's a link on that one page that said, I have to go find it again. You know, if you wanted to view it on the livestream, click here. And it was just, or the webcast streaming link, if you're a member of the General Republican, like to view the proceedings, please watch by the commission's webcast. I just don't know where that is, that's all.
Yeah, the letter from Ryan actually has instructions, but it says, "He attached it."
Right, that first, the end of that sentence...
There's the commission viewing instructions, streaming link.
Right, that first paragraph that you're, at the top, it says, "Streaming link too far." Start at Page 2.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, because you can't click on that, or I can't click on that. Click that web link right there at the end of the streaming link sentence.
It also says, "Call the phone number."
Right.
But it didn't give you the phone number.
Yeah, so...
We didn't.
A copy of the letter was put on Facebook. That's what I, so I was like, that's how I saw it.
And if people got the hard copy letters, they wouldn't know that. If they got the email, they would probably have a live link.
Yeah, so...
All right, anything else on that? Sorry to get a little long there. All right. So along those lines, when we had, we were talking with Liz last week, she was talking about a utility, CenterPoint, purchasing land in a residential area, which she briefly said that's authorized, and I'm thinking more for the, you know, like a substation like we have down here on 5 in Green Valley. But she said it was going to be for parking, tree trimming, and for storing tree trunks and grinding wood chips and... And so, so again, it's one of those things that is gonna come up for the P and Z, and I would imagine, let's see, we're two weeks out, so public hearing notices need to go out today, Lori?
No, they didn't go out today.
I mean, aren't they two weeks, 10 days before?
10 days before, they'll need to be.
So they need to go out this week. So what I'm asking the council, I'll make a motion that that when public hearings are noticed, that the council be provided with a copy of the public hearing notice, whatever's going out to residents, and then a list of the residents it went out to. Because I know that always comes up that P and Z didn't go out to everybody. We really don't know who that is. And in this zone, it just hit me that we're gonna get questions, and if, this is very close to Wild Run East, but they might not be in 1,300, 20-foot distance to get letters. But if you're running a grinder doing wood chips across the water from them, I listened to my neighbor do grinding all day today, and I think we would have a problem. And so, so rather than come to a meeting unprepared and say, "What is this?", I think it's appropriate, like we've asked the public, the CenterPoint, if they're gonna be doing something, contact us so we know, because we're gonna get questions out there. You're gonna be reading Facebook. We're gonna get, run into people at the store and say, "What's going on here?" So my recommendation to the council is that when public hearing notices are put out, that the council gets copied, and we are copied on the residents that received that notice as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Why do we keep having these businesses in residential areas? Can we funnel them to our commercial areas? So that they're not such, because it seems like they become problems after a while in most residential areas.
Well, and this one's unique, and again, it's something that Liz just kind of mentioned in passing. And that's why we're not gonna know. It's gonna be at P and Z, and we won't really know. But why would they do that? Because utilities have the authority to do so. But it's generally, like I say, a substation. Now, you can say what you want. Sometimes the wires hum, sometimes there's trucks coming and going. But the substation down the road's a fairly quiet place. You'll see a service truck there occasionally. But utilities have that, because you have to have links to keep your network in place. This one's unique, where they're taking the opportunity for a utility to buy land in a residential area, but they're using it in a commercial fashion. This is not necessary for the linkage of their power lines, and I can tell, but I don't know what notice is going out on it. So it'd be nice to know when that notice goes out, so that we could at least be aware and researching it. But this is one, if you're putting a 10-acre parcel into truck storage and lumber storage and lumber grinding, chipping, I got a feeling, and you're definitely right across wetlands from a very nice neighborhood, that it's going to be a problem.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo.
Do we have any authority as a council to be able to specify what they can and can't do? Or as a utilities, can they specify?
I don't know, because all I know is what Liz briefly mentioned the other day. You know, it, and that's, again, part of the concern is we're coming in late to the party. And if somebody's already gone through... It used to be one of my big frustrations with the town board, that I'd come in, after the residents got notices, and we'd be sitting here, and they'd all be concerned, and the town board would say, "Well, these guys have been working on this for months, you know. What are they gonna do? They spent all this money." It's like, "Yeah, but these people built houses there, and it's a residential area." But it was always like the residents were too late to the party to know what's going on. I don't know what the, under what grounds they're saying they can do this. And if they're saying specifically they can build a substation or, you know, a transfer line or something of that sort, you know, well, does this fit that category? You know, it's one of the things that every time I see a residential or a transitional use sign down in Ramsey, I call. You know, "What's going on in this corner? What's going on in there?" They're well-versed, you know. "What's the address or approximate address? Here's what's going on. Here's the status with the planning and zoning. Here's the status with the city. Here's the schedule of meetings." You know, I can get good information that way. This one here is gonna come up in two weeks, and it's gonna come to the P and Z, and they're gonna come to it as cold as we are right now. They're gonna expect Liz to give them a findings effect, and then they're gonna make a recommendation to us. And I realize, quite often, I'm sitting at a meeting, and I say, "I don't know what the letter, I don't know what letter went out to the residents. I don't know who was informed." One of the reasons we put out land use signs is so people driving by could say, "Gosh, I live right over there, but I didn't get the letter." Well, you live more than 1,300 feet away, so you're not gonna get a letter. But yeah, that land use may impact you tremendously. So I think at least if the council would get that, because right now, when Liz files it, and I'm assuming Liz does that, or do you guys file the public hearing, Lori?
Liz does.
So Liz files a public hearing, letters have to be sent out, and I assume she sends those out through you guys? So she provides you the letter, you send it out. So I'm just saying, at that point, copy the council when those letters are, because when the public hearing is noticed, that has to be at least 10 days before the public hearing. And there will be a list, because she's gonna give you a list who to send it to.
We track that.
You track it? So that list exists. I'm not asking for extraordinary amount of work. I'm just saying it'd be more timely if we knew when the public hearing was going out. One, people see it in the paper. Two, people see it on the signage. And three, people talk. And I'd like to know before people start asking, "What's that sign down on 181st?" Councilmember Rainbow.
Mr. Mayor, at one time we talked, and you may have mentioned this, I just stepped out. At one time, we talked, based on the size of our lots, that we would increase that 1,300. There's not, it seems to me I remember saying that there wasn't any reason we couldn't, you just couldn't go less than.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at projects that are in areas that are more sparsely populated, and we increase that 1,300 to give them...
To the appropriate number where people would be affected.
Correct, yes. And then so the notice, we'll get the notice of the public hearing and what goes out to the residents.
And which residents it goes out to.
And which residents it goes out to. Also, what I'd like to be able to see is a copy of the application to have that additional information. Now, I don't know if we're publicizing things for public meetings prior to having a complete application. So maybe that's...
The application has to be complete before she calls for a public hearing.
Okay, then I would like to also get a copy of the public, of the application.
Let me verify that. When I've talked to Liz in the past, she said there's times she couldn't call for a public hearing because she didn't have a complete application. So it doesn't go to public notice until she has a complete application. Okay.
Okay, so do we, are we willing to...
Up to the council. I'm bringing it to the council for...
I would like to see the application also.
And be earlier than, and you're in the P and Z packet?
When it's filed.
When the public notice goes up, when the public hearing notice goes out,
So this week, Liz has to notice any public hearings for the P and Z meeting on the 28th. And so as Mary's asking, is when she does that, she has a complete application. She's given a letter to Lori, and Lori and Ellen researched the, you know, 1,300 and whatever feet from the site. Do you know what that is, Lori?
Not up yet. It depends on what type of a project it is. The 1,300 sounds right, something like that.
So Mary's asking, what I'm asking is the copy of the letter goes out and a list of who it went to. Mary's asking to add the completed application.
I'm just trying to understand the value of having the application ahead of time when it would be included in the packet. And is that what, does that...
They won't get the packet until Friday before the meeting. Or the notice would come out this week. So it'd improve it by a week plus. Having the application to the council.
I'm just trying, I just, I personally don't necessarily see the value in having the actual application in a week in advance, that's all. Where, when it would be included in the packet, and I wouldn't want to, I don't know how or if that the process would be changed, because as I understand it, the application is not included in the public notice for the hearing.
Councilmember Rainbow.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the application goes out with the public notice to the residents. I would just like it ahead of time, so that I can look at the whole picture, rather than getting A and B and not having C, or getting A and C and not having B.
Right, so that comes into, I don't know without asking Lori what the process is for all those pieces come in place, and is that, does that disrupt the current workflow if the application gets included?
Well, we would be sending, if we did it that way, we would be sending all the information to council before the Planning and Zoning Commission even sees it.
Councilmember Rainbow.
And I don't, I don't have any issue with that, the council gets it first. We make final determination on a recommending body.
Well, actually, I thought, you know, we'd have to go back and check minutes, but I thought that because that information all has to be available 10 days ahead of time, that's when we're gonna send it to P and Z. I mean, again, the more time they have to investigate, the better. If they're, if they're getting it on Friday, they don't have a chance before Tuesday to go look at a site or investigate. They're coming in fairly cold. If the, if the P and Z information all has to be done at least 10 days before the meeting, I'd send it all out at that time. I mean, I don't know if you, something jumps out at you as to that being more challenging, does she?
The only challenging issue on that would be is we're sending pieces of the packet rather than the entire packet at one time.
Mr. Mayor?
One second. So I think, though, when I've talked to Liz in years past, if I ask her within 10 days of P and Z, she knows exactly what the agenda is. I mean, would we have to send it out in pieces if she knows what the agenda is at the 10-day point?
We can send the agenda, but we are, we're usually waiting until the packet goes out the door to get all of the pieces that accompany the packet. But we could send the agenda out in advance. We'll know what's going to be discussed. We just may not have the entire packet to go with it.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainbow.
So I take that as we're not adhering to the, we're having all complete information prior to public hearings, because if we're waiting for information after we've noticed the public hearing...
No, the application is complete, but Liz does things to prepare the planning and zoning or the presentation.
She's doing her findings, I think.
Facts and findings.
Yeah. So that goes into the complete packet that we send out. So when the application is complete, she has everything she needs to start working on it then.
Well, so, so we're not adding to the workload tremendously to say, "A copy of the letter is copied..." Well, so, so we're not adding to the workload tremendously to say, a copy of the letter is copied to the council and the list. Because you have to have that ten days in. Can we try that to begin with, and then talk to Liz about what goes into the packet and when she does the findings effect? Because I thought we had that discussion before, and, and she basically should have a complete packet at a time. And if that's unrealistic, then yeah, we shouldn't be doing that multiple times. If it's something that says, no, I couldn't have that already by the time I do the public hearing notice, we should ask that when our next meeting with Liz. Say, all right, we're just the first two at this point? Any other, so that's my motion, do I have a second?
You have a second for discussion.
All right, so, now we're in discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Is, um, this would mainly be a question for Lori, and she probably needs to find out with Liz, and maybe we could, Lori and Liz can have a conversation to see how all this process could be, what's, what's possible and what is it, what isn't. Is it more of an inconvenience to just email out the information? Or, because I'm just going, I, I, you know, prefer to have it so I can just quick get it, if it was in my email versus, I, I don't know, you know, what, if the mayor want, wanted the actual printed copy of, or, or it actually mailed to him, I'm not exactly, I'm just trying to fill in those details in the process. Where I don't know if it's already in, because I think Liz already has everything in a PDF.
So how we work the packets is we take all of the PDFs on the computer, and we scan them all into one packet. And we add and move and whatever needs to go in to match the agenda. And then that's what we send electronically out. And we try to do it when the packet's complete, because then if we have to go back in, we're moving pages and trying to get everything to match up again, and then re-sending it out.
Okay, let me clarify. When it comes time to send the letters out for the public hearing, does Liz send the letters as a PDF to you and Ellen?
No, I think they're in Word, they, Word, yeah, they could be PDF.
Could they be electronically sent out at that time?
The letters are, they're easy. We have to send those out ten days in advance, we can just copy council on those, that's.
See, either way, they could be emailed, they're sending hard copies to the residents already.
Right.
So if a council member, I'm going to guess there's, there's at least two council members that prefer just to have the email. And if there are council members that would like to have a hard copy, it's just one to three more hard copies of what you're already sending out to the residents.
I don't want to upset the cart if it's electronic versus printed copy.
No, I thought you meant the packets and individually sending that information.
I assume that since the hard copies have to go out to the residents, that that wouldn't, wouldn't be extremely inconvenient if some of the council wanted it. And for some that want electronic, you're going to have electronic version there that you're printing from, so. So it's just as easy to say these, just a note and a file, these people want electronic, these people want hard copy and electronic.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
And, and just to clarify, we wouldn't get a copy of every letter that went out, just the basic letter with that list.
Same one that each individual.
Correct, but, yeah, just one.
And then you'll have a, a list that you'll compile of who got it. So having another copy of that is not, again, shouldn't be a difficulty. Other questions? And then, and then just to, so we're continuing to run everything through you, as, as you hear things like from center point, I'm going to, you know, I asked when she called me, I want to make sure she had talked to you. If you're hearing things that might be coming at us, that you'll, like you've been doing, here's something the council should know. All right, so back to this one. At the point of filing for public hearings, council would be concluded on the letter that goes out to the residents and a list of the resident that goes out. Any other questions? Seeing and hearing that, and all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mary Recycling.
Mr. Mayor, at our workshop, we talked about verbiage to be placed on the, the Facebook pages, the community Facebook pages, do we have that ready yet?
I don't have that ready yet, tomorrow on, I wanted to come today with it, I didn't have time to get that.
All right, and then a question I had raised is there were some residents that said they would be willing to volunteer, and I had asked if we could check with the attorney, our insurance agency, and you also mentioned the league. And I'm wondering if we have that.
I don't have that information.
Information either, okay. I, I want to be prepared if somebody, if these people contact me, that I can tell them yes or no.
And right now, we're Tuesday, Thursday?
Saturday.
And Saturday, nine to noon on Saturday? And Tuesday, Thursday? What were our hours?
Ten to seven.
Ten to seven.
Ten AM to seven PM, Tuesday and Thursday. Saturday, nine to twelve.
And Lori, will you be posting that on the website then too?
Yes.
Can I coordinate with Lori on that? As far as Facebook goes? Or do we want, not want to put it on Facebook?
I would like to put it on the community Facebook.
Is that okay?
I've been asking and asking, so I think that would be, but once Lori has the verbiage ready, so that it's the same thing.
Fee structure's in place, so people know if they're. And then we'll have to at some point here review that, now that we know we're getting, we're paying by the pound on electronics and appliances and mattresses. We'll have to review our fee schedule, but for right now, we'll give people an opportunity to get their recyclables cleaned out, at least occasionally.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Make a motion, I make a motion that Joel Greenberg worked with Lori strike into generating, no? I, what I'm asking is, can I proceed with Lori in making some sort of a Facebook post? Do I need to make a motion for that, Dan, Brian?
So that's a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, so we got a second. And we have discussion, Councilmember Brian.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenberg, would you be, would you be opposed to amending your motion to include Councilmember Rainville on your discussions with Lori regarding the communication of recycling center to?
So the same thing goes out on both. I, I just want to be careful that they don't become our official notification.
Correct.
Well, it doesn't have to be. It could be just a Facebook, but my guess, or just a website, but my guess is no one's going to know until they see the sign on the side of the road that says recycling open, and they're all going to throw their hands up and say, what, when did this happen?
Yeah, I just, I just, my caution is that we don't start using that as official voice for the city. But, but since there's two websites or two Facebook pages represented here, and if there's a uniform thing goes out on both of them, I, I think that's a reasonable thing.
I think.
What are the two?
I think because we're still in the COVID nineteen, I think it's still appropriate, because we, the prior two recycling days that we had, we communicated this way, because we're still in that special time, once we reach to full openness, then.
Oh, a dreamer.
Come on, Mary, back me up here. When we reach full openness, it's going to happen one day, isn't it? Mary says it's going to happen one day.
But Mary says, and I believe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, one or two Facebook pages?
The Allen Bulletin Board and the real Facebook.
And so Joel does the real Facebook? The real now then, is that the name of it?
I've been posting on both, but this time, we're going to include Mary, and Mary and Lori and I are going to work together, get the appropriate verbiage, use the same template I used the first time around, so it looks the same. And it's going to be communication from the city, but not officially.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Official communication, but like I said, it's still in that COVID nineteen, in my opinion.
And I think it's important, because people need to realize that we're going back to a fee structure.
Right, and that's why the communication and someone being there on Tuesday and Thursday, to be the, a person on, with boots on the ground to say, things have changed, just so the communication is clear. I'm partying it up with the old reunion with the Greenbirds. I mean, I'm on vacation, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I said I would be able to help on Thursday, but I have a, a conflict. I, I didn't check my calendar when I said that, and I have a meeting about Africa on that day. I can go for some time, but I can't go that whole period of time.
And again, it's, it's where people can do what they can do. We, we appreciate whatever you can put in, and, and we're, we're just trying to encourage people to get back to a semblance of order. It's going to be open three days a week for restricted hours, and there will be a fee schedule. We want to communicate that, and if people can be there for that to, for gentle encouragement and help out where they can to keep up, since we don't have county workers helping, it's just a kind of a, the opportunities for us to contribute more as, as a council.
Mr. Mayor.
But there's no overtime pay for us.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Brian, I don't, I'm comfortable with Joel, Councilmember Greenberg and Lori working on the verbiage. I don't think we need three of us in there. So whatever you guys decide, as long as that's what we, we, we've agreed that one set of, one piece of information is going to go in any location that we posted in.
And I would guess it's going to be the same thing, it's pretty much going to be on the website.
Yeah, that's what I want, that's what I want.
It's going to say, this is on the website. But we just want, for people that don't go to the website, we just want to make sure the information.
Most people will read it on the road.
And that, just for on Tuesday morning, that if Joel can be there in the morning, just to get us up and in, in and running and, I'll be there Tuesday morning, so. So that's all I have on it.
So my amended motion.
Are you agree, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian.
I haven't heard if Councilmember Greenberg is, is, is okay with, well, then I, I.
Recite.
So your motion as it was presented. That you'll work with Lori, and we'll have a uniform presentation on our website that goes, that's, that's presented to both the prominent Facebook pages and now then to say, if you guys would run this, we'd appreciate, well, here's something, you would just post it. And you would just post it.
I would just post it.
So you just have to send it to Mary. Well, you can post on both.
I've done that in the past.
Okay, so you can post it.
I know sometimes Mary has grabbed others and posted it as well, so I can do either way. I can just alert you when I do.
I'm fine with you posting on both.
All right, so you work with Lori, get it uniform, consistent with what we're going to do, and we authorize you to post as you would, because it's a public site. So that's the understanding?
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Yes, why is Dan smirking?
You just want to make sure in that posting that you say there'll be a special guest appearance by Councilmember Blake on Thursdays.
Special guest appearance.
She'll be bringing.
We don't know the time, but she's going to give me a fun time, so stick around.
She'll be bringing homemade treats, I'll be buying them at Bill's.
In word for COVID, she'll be making homemade treats.
I'm going to leave my treats at the office, probably.
Councilmember Brian.
So, the, the motion on the floor is to reopen the recycling center on Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturdays, from ten to seven Tuesday, Thursday, and nine to noon on Saturday. And that Councilmember Greenberg would be looking with, with Lori on the verbiage to go on the website and the Facebook page. The Facebook pages, correct?
That is correct.
Is it?
And do we want to, for the foreseeable future, make this every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday? Or just two weeks out in advance, or how far?
So we change.
Until for the notice?
I, I think until we find out it doesn't work. If it finds out we can do more than that, we'll do more than that, if we get feedback on the hours. If, if it's turning out that it's more work than we can handle, it's, if right now, it's until further notice. Now, subject to change. Because if the county comes back and says we, we have help again, or if we just find out we can't keep up with the volume we're getting, or we find out we're losing money on it, and we have to come back, and that's the other part of it, we can't just be subsidizing it forever and not have any money.
Have to sure you put the fee stuff in there.
Oh, yeah.
The fee stuff's on the website, though.
We have to let people know that we're paying.
Well, just, just in case. Yeah, just in case we get some residents who think that free appliances and free electronics is now the new norm, that is part of my reason for wanting to do this, is to just inform them that we're going back to the normal schedule.
Yes, but I would not recommend putting the fee schedule on Facebook.
No, just, just saying that there will be charges, so it's not like the two free days.
Contact the city offices for, if they have questions on the fee schedule.
And then you'll be letting Ellen know that people will be starting to come in again with payments.
Yeah, and that we will not take payments at the center, I think that's.
Go to the office.
Yeah, payments at the office, get your paid sticker.
These are things I'd like to communicate. Because some people, it's brand new information, believe it or not.
Yeah, when, when we had our recycling days, I said, so they came with cans of papers, you know where that goes, never been here before. So, yeah, people need to know, it's back to the published fee schedules, you pay at the office, get a paid sticker, bring it over.
And Dan, you advise not to put those actual costs on that notification? I can provide a link.
You could provide a link to the fee schedule, that would work.
All right, anything else?
Love it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Say, so remember that a week from yesterday, we have a capital improvement budget work session?
Two to four.
Two to four, here?
Oh, here?
Here. Will we be getting any information prior to that? Okay. All right, anything else, otherwise we will adjourn.
Can I quick get that date again for that two hour meeting?
It's the twenty.
Twenty.
He'll be gone.
He'll be gone, he'll be with the Greenberg.
That's why it's not really up there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Apologize, I thought we'd be done earlier than this, but good me. Did you have something you'd wish?